And I'll call this meeting the Cardesville City Council to all if you will please stand for our amendment and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. I will fall into heaven once again with a similar office health in the House of City Government one more time. We ask you to continue to look down on us, guide us in discussions and make a decision that's best for the city. We praise you, we lift you up, we bless your name. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Draper, please.
Carrie High, Ward 1, here. Jake Stout, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Taffren, Ward 6.
Here.
The gang's all here, let's get right to it. We have the approval of our council many minutes from May 18th, council. I wouldn't hear. Give you all an opportunity to approve those minutes or make any changes that may be necessary. Motion to approve. Second. Hold favor of Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. We have a second reading ordinance. Mr. Minnell, get us started off there, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a proposed text amendment to the alcohol ordinance, our administrative process regarding third quarter reporting. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. Alcohol Control Board does recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? If there's none, motions in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
Hold favor of Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, you get the distinct honor of reading for us the first time of the budget ordinance for FY 2024.
Admiral Mayor and council, as you said, this is the first reading of the 2023-24 budget. We'll go through the presentations hopefully very quickly. First slide represents the last year's budget of $179,526,515. 2024 budget is $217,091,535. It's a reference in the increase of $37,565,020 or 24.92% increase. In our caucus meeting earlier, you noted that I will be making a couple of changes, just to let you know. Those changes will be incorporated, I will be presenting that for the rest of the budget in the next reading. Next slide. New proposal budget. It continues your, the 10-year capital plan. It does have a small increase in water and sewer rates. There's a small increase in property taxes. It includes salary increases. It has the old pension plan contribution decreasing to 17%. Increases the transfers to the general fund from the water, gas, fiber and electric funds. Incorporated goals from revision accession and continues running in major capital expenditures throughout all funds.
Tom, I'm gonna go back and I'm not gonna let it rest, go back to that. I do want to point out, when you say small increase in property taxes, our middle drain is staying the same, the digest has increased. That means that the pie has gotten bigger. We are gonna use that pie towards city things like paving and engineering costs for a new fire station. When the pie gets bigger, we're simply growing along with that pie as the needs in our community grow. The state of Georgia requires us to call it a property tax increase, although they do the exact same thing and do not call it a tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna talk a little bit about budget by comparison by fund. In the general fund, you'll notice that there's about a $5.2 million increase in that budget. Electric budget, there's an $8.5 million increase. And the gas fund is a $14.41 million increase. And the water and sewer fund is a $7.2 million increase. In the SPOSS 2020 fund, there's a $2.3 million increase. And that all represents a $37.6 million increase. Budget by comparison, you'll notice that the personnel increase has decreased by $47,000. That is largely the effect of the pension plan, the old pension plan going down to 17% contribution for the city. The operating expenses increased $3 million. Purchase of commodities increased $11.1 million. Debt service increased almost $2 million. Capital increases increased $20.6 million. And the transfer to the general fund increased nearly a million dollars. Next slide represents the number of, the size of the budgets over the last several so budget years. And you can see in 2017, we were at $157 million, eased up to $183.41 million. In 2019, you slimmed back down in 2020, '21, '22, got a little bit fatter in 2023 and increased into 2024, $217.1 million. Talk a little bit about the number of employees that were hired, that we had allotted in 2015. We were at 354 full-time employees, jumped up into 2018 to 360 employees. Further increase in 2021 to 368 employees. Last year in 2023, they had 376 employees. And this year we're jumping to 381 employees. Talk a little bit about the proposed agency, I was sorry, agency funding. The first column in green is the actual requested funds totaling $1,947,400. Currently issued in the budget is $1,032,700. That number will be changing, as I mentioned earlier, with the next presentation. This represents a pie chart showing the different sizes of the funds. You'll notice that the first largest fund is the electric at 29%. Second largest is the gas fund at 22%. Water comes in third at 21%. And the general comes in fourth at 19%. This is pretty typical of the city budget and those funds about the size of them. They may vary from year to year, but that's typically the four of the largest. Talk a little bit about the water and sewer fund changes, rate changes. We are proposing a 2% increase in the water and sewer rates for customers both inside and outside the city units. With this change, with the witness that increase, we will still remain one of the lowest rates in the surrounding areas. We'll continue with the water and sewer capacity foods continuing at 100%. And we will continue the 10-year capital plan. Water rate comparison, you'll notice how the far left-hand side is the current center proposal rate at $63.54. The next row over is the proposed rate of $64.81. This is based on a residential customer who uses 7,000 gallons a month. The increase in this based on the 7,000 gallons is $1.27 per month, again on 7,000 gallons Talk a little bit about the electrical residential rates. You'll notice in blue is the city of Cardesville. The red solid line is Georgia Power current rates. And the red dotted line is Georgia Power rates after they put their new rates into effect, effective in June sometime. So again, you'll see that the city cost has quite been lower than the proposed rate or the new one when Georgia Power starts up.
I just want to take a second and kind of reiterate, Tom, that point because obviously everybody's read the AJC article with the Georgia Power with the plant of all. We're all experiencing that, we're 22% shareholder with that, with MEAG, Municipal Electric Authority Cities, Georgia Cities. We kept our rates where affordable. Georgia Power obviously gone to the PSC that regulates them. They're gonna go up with the rate increase, it's been approved. So as Tom pointed out, that dotted line's gonna be their increase. So you can see the differential where we're at currently, we're already lowest, less than them. They're gonna be even higher here, starting in June.
Well, I've also heard that their plan, I can't remember where I read it, but their plan is to go before the PSC again before the end of the year for another one. I don't know.
I believe I've already had two.
They don't. It's a 12% increase that they just got.
I believe there's another two rate increases coming up, I want to say 4% or 5% over the next couple of years also with Georgia Power.
So we're trying to hold our lines for, be as competitive as possible on the residential and the commercial industrial side as well. But you can see where Georgia Power's gonna be significantly above us with their new rate
Talk a little bit about the gas comparison. Based on 716 tons used, you can see where the cars with gas system is $1.52 per ton. Next lowest is Constellation at $1.80 per ton. And the third lowest is Stream Energy at $1.78 per ton.
And just another point, again, it's our fiscal year, the most recent data we have to compare ourselves against other marketers in the Atlanta Gaslight Territory. And we are the lowest comparing to other agency, other marketers that serve in the Atlanta Gaslight Territory. So I just wanted to share where we, how we compare and continue to try to make sure that our costs. Obviously, natural gas prices last year spiked to the highest that we've ever seen, but we are continually trying to be as competitive as possible and this slide shows that.
Talk a little bit about the future needs of the city. Currently, there are three major projects that will be needed to be addressed. First one is Carter Grove Fire Station. Building cost is estimated at about $7 million. We'll have to add another 12 full-time firefighters or fire employees. That will be about a million dollars annually. Second project is the old fire station renovation with an expected cost of $2.5 million. And third is the Park Street Recreation Facility on Tennessee Street with an approximate cost of $18 million.
Those goals that we're going to have, we should hopefully have some move in on that once we get some land sale proceeds from the industrial park on some of those. And we do have reserves in the old fire station. Actually, I have a proposal that I received from Croft that probably bring before council next meeting to kind of get that ball rolling and how we want to proceed with the old fire station renovation and that discussion.
And lastly, is our conclusion. Before I conclude, I would really like to thank the other department heads for putting all the effort and helping me get this in balance. I'd like to thank the council for their guidance and also Mr. Porter for his guidance. In conclusion, fiscal, fiscal austerity is what the city does. We look for everything that we can to, every which way to save an operational cost. We, the budget increase transfers to the general fund from the water and sewer fund, gas, fiber and electric funds. There's a small increase in property taxes. We're proposing a 2% increase in water and sewer rates. Some of the major funding for the capital items are SUIA and MI project, using reserves from the electric, gas and water funds, along with some SPOSS funding. And there's our capital expenses included in all the funds.
And one of the things that Tom mentioned that may have been kind of glossed over with the different numbers you mentioned, but you know, out of the $37.5 million budget increase, 11.1 million is the commodities, the gas and electric additional costs that we anticipate having to pay, which is, you know, about 30% of that 37 million. We have, and we do have some capital projects in the water department, the building costs in there, renovation, the old electric apartment building, which is, you know, I think about 30 something years old. Some of those capital projects and AMI projects, we're trying to keep moving forward. So those are some capital expenses we continue to have and the other capital projects that you'll continue to work on, but those are kind of the bigger thing.
And again, when you look at those increases in the capital projects because of the cost of construction over the last few years, I mean, I'll commend you, Dan, the city's really backed off on doing any kind of construction because of the skyrocketing costs and to try, we tried to hold the line, but now there's things we simply need. And that's why when you look year to year, you'll see that big difference because we really did a good job, again, under your leadership, to kind of hold those capital projects back so we weren't overpaying for things. Can I ask that, if it's not already, can we put this budget presentation on our webpage so that residents have an opportunity to look this presentation over?
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, this is the first reading. Just, again, just go on with the, this is the first reading and next week, the second meeting in June, we'll be hopefully approving the budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on this? Thank you. Good work. No, it's, you all banded awful lot of work into a presentation like that, but takes a lot of everybody, but I know it all funnels to you and your staff, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
You got anything to add, officer?
Okay.
Thank you. We'll move on to the amendment to the utilities ordinance regarding water and sewer rates.
Yes, sir. This is the first reading on this. Admiral Mayor and council, as I said earlier, the present budget for 2024 includes an increase in the water and sewer rate to help address the maintenance and capital issues of the water fund. Increase is a 2% increase across the board for residential water and sewer rate for both inside and outside of the city and within customers. The 2% increase will allow the water department to continue the maintenance of the existing water and sewer system as well as update and expand the system to fulfill the needs of existing customers and any new customers that come along. Again, as I said earlier, for residential customers, the water and sewer rate increase equates to $1.27 per 7,000 gallons used. With the proposed increase in the water and sewer rates, the city, card for residents, we remain one of the lowest in the surrounding municipalities. As we looked at the presentation, the increase is imminent to maintain the existing system and plan for any necessary future expansions.
Thank you. Questions on this item? Thank you. Continue, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
We'll vote on that in our next meeting along with the budget ordinance. Dan, you have the next item.
Yes, sir. This is the Rotary Club of Etowah for the July 4 celebration, Dillinger Park, request for funding of $6,000 and approval of this agreement.
Questions, comments or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor of Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Chief Carter, you are up, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. We're being performed tonight, we're requesting approval for architectural engineering services for the design through the construction, also through the warranty period. We're asking you to approve this agreement with Croft and Associates for this construction. This will be for Cardesville Fire Station number five, which will be located at 51 Carter Grove Boulevard. We'll be maintaining our current design. This is the reason for going with Croft. We're maintaining our current design that we've utilized twice already. It's more cost-effective this way, the price is down and also we've learned a lot over the time, so the station is a lot more efficient. The cost of proposal is $412,100. We're requesting our amount up to, now to exceed $425,000. This will be a budgeted capital project and we're also requesting for the mayor to be authorized to sign any and all documents in relation to this agreement.
And I know, just kind of remind council, obviously, we did apply for the safer grant for the 12 firefighter. We really won't know an answer until September, as we expected of that. This kind of gets us the ball rolling, as Chief mentioned, on the architectural engineering, to kind of update those plans, get ready. Chief has got the construction manager at RST, RFP, sent to myself and Freddie earlier this week to kind of look at that, to get that out the door. But we're kind of looking at really September, October of next year probably is when that building could be done, depending on if we move through those next steps. So trying to anticipate that. Obviously, the big hurdle's going to be the personnel, but we need to keep this momentum moving forward. And then, once we get a decision on the personnel, we'll have to say, okay, you're good. We'll have three years of coverage of that personnel covered through the grant, or we'll have to start funding those new positions. As chief, we'll have to make plans to hire those individuals and get them up to speed. But this is kind of the next steps to have this building done and ready, hopefully by early January of 2025.
Yes, sir. That's the target.
That's the target.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. I guess I need to motion, don't I?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor of Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Wilson, you are up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. City Cardesville currently is a community that contains a Phase 2 MS4, which is a municipal separate storm sewer system. We have a general permit that allows us to discharge water into the state. This is every five years, the general permit is revised by Georgia EPD. To be in compliance with this permit and the notice of intent that we actually signed in November this year, we have to submit a stormwater management program. And this is just a cover of the program. We are requesting the council's approval for the mayor to sign the updated stormwater management program and to allow the fireworks director or the city engineer to sign any other associated documents with this in the 2023 calendar year. And just as a side note, our program is not changing much from what was the previous five years.
Good. Or bad if there's changes that we're supposed, that we would hope that would have been made, but we'll see from there. Any other, any questions or discussion? If not, emotions in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
Hold favor of Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Wade.
Yes, the next item is, we're currently applying from Georgia Department of Transportation for LMIG Safety Action Program. And this is a LMIG grant that's not like our resurfaces, a little bit different because it is concerning safety measures. And we're applying for this grant in order to purchase a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which is an RRFB. You see them on Main Street now, we have two of them. Those are actually, they're a different program, but we're looking at, looking at the cross farmhead on Pine Grove Road in front of Dillinger Park. We are gonna have to do a study to make sure it warrants signals there. But if we are able to be successful with this grant, then we would apply the money from this program to purchase those. It is a 70% reimbursement program, so it's estimated that those would cost us about $10,000. And so we would be reimbursed 70, no, $7,000 by GDOT if we are successful. We are requesting the mayor's signature of this grant application.
Thank you. Questions, comments or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor of Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Mr. Forsyth, you've got the final three tonight.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council. The first item that I have is the engineering services for the water treatment plant expansion. You see the graphic on the screen there. This proposal is from William and Singleton Engineers. Each call out on that graphic is something that will be touched or modified in the treatment plant. Some of the shaded and colored areas will actually be additional facilities added. Due to the impending increased demand on our entire system and the water treatment plant especially, it is needful that we expand this plant and relatively quickly, if you can go to the next slide. This graph shows the projected demand for our water system versus the current maximum capability of the water treatment plant. And you can see that it actually kind of crosses over each other and we exceed our maximum capacity. Now, this is a conservative estimate and this is in a maximum month scenario, so it would be like July, August, September. And that includes residential, commercial and industrial additions. If everyone does exactly what they're asking for, that's what the demand will look like. We're requesting to design this increase to 37 million gallons per day from our current maximum of 20.5 million gallons per day. The reason for the 37 is that is our 2050 projected demand as determined by the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District for the city and county. That is also the, the storage allocation currently in negotiation with the Corps of Engineers in the state of Georgia. So I'm, I'm recommending that we go ahead and build out. As you can see, we will not be too far ahead of ourselves by going to that. But all that being said, the proposed engineering design for permitting, bidding, construction, all the way through construction of the project is $6,992,000 from William and Singleton Engineers. Most of this is in the new budget as proposed. Obviously, this will go over that budget year, so I didn't put all of it in there. This is recommended for your approval.
Questions for Sydney on this item? If there are none, emotions in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor of Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. The next item is, is a simple one. Water meters for stock, one pallet of AMI compatible water meters. They are sole source, purchased from Kendall Supply. One pallet is 192 meters for a cost of $24,921.60. This is a budgeted stock item, recommend for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there's none, the motion is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
Hold favor of Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Final item, please.
Yes, sir. The final item is an invoice, obviously for this is work, this is work that had already been accomplished, but it due to some complications on site. Southway crane stayed a little longer and did a little more work than they had actually anticipated removing and replacing gearboxes on our digester. And you can see the picture there, those, those things are several tons each. We had to get an 80-ton crane because of the extended reach required for that. The cost of this invoice is $9,427. It is a budgeted maintenance item and request your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold favor of Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that needs to come before council this evening? If you would, please step forward and give us your name and your address for our clerk, please.
My name is Luliver Jeanne-Cote and I'm wearing the lovely Luger shirt. I'm not sure what the word I'm gonna get.
Well, you're in the city, so that's, that's up for us.
Okay. I didn't plan on seeing anything till I was reading what was going on. Okay, I got the word. There's a big crack in the street on Weaver Street. Who do I speak to regarding that? Because it's, they cut down a tree in my yard that had been filled with carpenter ass and there's a big huge hole inside the tree from the ground up. They broke my driveway, which I'm having a problem getting.
When you said they, you're talking, were these were city or did you have somebody, a private company did this?
On Etowah Housing had somebody to do this. I don't know.
Okay.
Who it was, but they broke my driveway and Etowah Housing said, we're not doing anything with that. So I'm dealing with that. But there's also a big crack in the ground that is getting bigger and bigger on that street between 11 Weaver Street and 13 Weaver Street. I'm really curious about what advancements or any benefits you have for disabled people regarding the Dillinger Swimming Pool and the senior swimming pool. In regards to the senior swimming pool, if we require therapy, do we still have to pay to go to the pool? If we get a referral, do we, are we still required? I have asked, they have made no difference in whoever it is, but I don't think it's fair if it's part of our therapy that we should have to pay for it. As if, as we're just, I'm not a senior. I kind of fall in the crack. I've only been disabled for seven years, so I don't really fit in either category. And also at Dillinger Park, they require you to pay even if you don't swim. And I said, okay, they require you to pay the fee even if you don't swim. Cause I've taken my grandsons and they said, well, you still have to pay too. I say, well, I'm not swimming because I'm hurting. It's like, you still have to pay the fee. On a couple of times I did pay the fee, they, the whole summer, they wouldn't let anybody in the deep end. And I asked Y and the girl's like, well, we don't have enough staff. I said, well, how many staff people do you need for some people to swim in the deep end, at least the adults? And she wouldn't answer that. I said, well, I don't think it's fair that I have to pay the full price fee to get in the pool and I can't have access to the deep end. And her response was, well, I think we should get paid for the work we do. I was like, that really has nothing to do with not allowing adults to swim in the deep end or any children that can swim in the deep end. However, when they want to cool off, that's where they swim, in the deep end. And I don't think that's fair. Because I've brought this up, I've now become a problem.
Let me stop you.
Okay.
You have not become a problem because we can only solve the problems that we know about.
Okay.
And I'll let, Mr. Porter is our city manager.
Okay.
Right here.
Hello.
And so afterward, after you're done making your comments and asking any other questions that you have, once the meeting's over, if you'll come on back up there, Dan can come back to you and we'll get you in contact with, or he'll be able to, he'll be able to work with you to get some of these questions answered.
Okay.
And then also hopefully try to get in touch with the right people to perhaps alleviate some of these issues.
Yeah, because I tried that going in the office and that didn't, and the head of that also is the head of the senior swimming, so that's why I said I've become an issue. of that also is the head of the senior swimming, so that's why I said I've become an issue because.
Well, this is the top of the food chain right here.
Okay. Great.
Are there any other questions?
If I'm under Etowah Housing, does the buck stop there? I mean, I'm, I'm a disabled person and they've known that since I moved there four years ago, and I'm not treated as such. So I have a lot of issues that I've gone to Ms. Rhonda about. And she said, okay, well, I'll look into it or we're not going to do anything about it. And now it's becoming an issue. I told them, I don't really want to go over your head, but I keep running into a brick wall, so I don't know what to do or where to go. In regards to the recent forms we signed for red as section eight.
Okay. I don't have an answer for that, and I don't know that you will off the top of your mind.
I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, Etowah Housing Authority gone as a federal run program, but I'll get your information and we'll see what we can do. I may have to reach out to my legal department to find out what we're allowed to do or, and go from there. But obviously, at the city pool and stuff, or senior water center, that's a city owned property and I can definitely work on that with you.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other business that needs to come for council tonight? I will simply say this, as many people in the city and the county have gotten their, their newly appraised tax bill and have had sticker shock like some of us have, I will simply tell you, the city of Carterville does not set the tax rate, so you don't need to bother calling Connie or Sam or anybody else there. The commissioner does not set the, the tax rate. It is done by the tax assessor's office. And on the Barto County, even if you live in the city, on the Barto County wood site, that's where your taxes are assessed. If you feel like your house is over assessed or your, your property is over assessed, there is an appeals process that you can go through. So again, everybody here lives inside the city. Everybody's probably experiencing the same thing that you are if, but there is a process, but part of that process doesn't include having to call me and yell at me or yell at anybody else at the city or even the commissioner. It's go through the appeals process if you feel like it's not properly done and try to seek relief that way. So, anything else? Chair on Tendemush, do you turn? So, let's say go.